We go to you in while you were.
Oh my god.
While you're not, while you're not at a meeting.
Great to see everybody today at tonight's school committee meeting on eleven four. And we've got Mariana on the line, awesome. And and Patty, our chair will be here. She's at football practice in Swansville, be there soon. Okay, I'd like to call, start off with a bang. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to make a motion to call the meeting to order. All in favor? Here we go. Okay, first, we're gonna start with the vice leader. Everybody rise as you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Now, we're gonna do the reading and approval of minutes. Are there any questions? Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Are there any questions about this?
So I don't. Yeah, Mariana's here. Do we need a forum to approve minutes?
Do we have a forum? But there's three out of five here. Is that a forum or is it?
Well, four.
Oh, we have four. We have four.
Yeah, we have a, so if there were three of us there, then two of us can approve it, right?
How about, should we wait for Patty and then approve the minutes? Would that be better?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, okay, we're gonna delay the minutes. And we are going to acknowledge any visitors. Mariana, is there anybody online besides you? I think I see two people.
Ms. Harrington and Ms. Smith.
Ms. Harrington and Ms. Smith, how fabulous, welcome. Okay, anybody receive any community input or correspondence that they'd like to bring up today?
I actually did.
Great.
A couple of the parents approached me asking if we can take into consideration for the next calendar year when looking at the big picture. That scheduling two half days into a four day weekend is incredibly hard for parents who work, especially teachers, because they can't, they cannot find coverage at home.
I will say, I also heard not informed back, but informally, three parents talking about that.
Correct, so Thursday, Friday, our parent teacher conferences, which are half days. And then Monday, they have no school and Tuesday, they have no school.
I hear Mariana saying on behalf of the folks that talked about this is two half days is hard enough. Then you add an entire day off before, so you know, that is, that is difficult to try to manage that much childcare. And then I know for me, I reached out to champions, find out if they would offer any support for Monday, because that's what they have many trouble with. And there's no support because school is technically not in session because we couldn't drive. I wonder if setting back, we can, is there any way possible we could have two nights in, in one day instead of two days? And then like, we would have to put that in the contract, right?
But I guess the other thing is, is that it all just kind of falls that way this year as well. Like next year, Veterans Day will be probably on Wednesday. So you're not gonna have, you know, this four or two days out. So like, I think it was just the way the calendar felt.
I do think it's particularly hard, it's like, cause Thanksgiving falls, we don't have control of that. But we do have control of that professional development day. And maybe if that could not coincide at the same time as parent teacher conferences, that would play the role. How do we keep track of the gen items that come up a year or similar to that? All right, any other community input that folks want to bring up? Okay, great, then moving on. We do not have any bills right now. Correct, Mr. Luva, so we don't. There was a failure. Okay. Okay, so big for the meeting, next meeting, that's your line. And then, sorry about that. And then we'll move into the superintendent's report when you're able to. It's all happening in one, oh my gosh, my, that's the only day, it spooks me out.
We have superintendents listed first.
Lately, still focuses on the greenhouse building up and running. Forty-seven kids signed up, which is thirty-five percent of the involvement. They don't all come all the time, but they're, oh, we don't have to come all the time. Because they have other activities and things like that. So there's a steady stream of kids, you have moved all the soil for the beds. You've planted spinach and lettuce, tomato.
No carrots.
Carrots, yes.
Oh, nice, I was peeking in here the other day.
Yeah, so I just think it's exciting. The kale that Jose started a couple of weeks ago was already almost a foot high. You know, not require it all the time. Pretty soon, everything is planted, so it's coming in as a water. There's not a whole lot of else you're gonna do until it's harvest time. Anyway, I think that's been my focus since I've been back, trying to make sure that was something's on.
Okay, um, so we have quite a few items to bring up. The teachers have begun their second bed marking for Star reading and Star map. And the early data so far, they're in the testing window, but the early data is really recording. And while we're still within our testing window and we're not in the full analysis, the data is coming out very strong with the vote, which is damn happy. They're very excited, which tells us that the intervention and the instruction will be in place. Lot of happy kids, a lot of happy parents. I mean, we actually, parents too, they've been sending emails, went home about it. And the teacher's walking out of there like, it's working. So it's really great. It's great news to talk about that. Um, our fifth and sixth grade students have been really busy preparing for Friday, Morad Veterans Day ceremony. We're promising for it to be a great event for our veterans who we've invited a hundred and eighty-eight. And we're set about twenty, that's about it, to see that they will be here. We sent to a whole list because we're trying to figure out who don't enjoy, who's available. There's a lot of things that we're discovering. So it's kind of nice because it's also streamlining of like the honoring of the community. So we're excited that they've been practicing, they've got songs, they've got speeches. They, the kids, they're just looking really closely. We had a lot of support from our music teacher, Jessica Puga. Classroom teachers have been very active participants in the planning, as well as our administration assistant, Sherry April, has been doing a lot of the R and D. And also Roxanne, she has been a food service supporting. And then we also have sixth grade parents who are doing the food and organizing. We're gonna have a little bit of a breakfast for the veterans upon arrival. We're also looking to have a partnership thereafter. So the, so the kids can mingle with the veterans and have some face contact with them. And they're very inclusive about it. I'm a military wife, so I, enough of the sixth grade students can talk to them about the importance of the event. What it means, so they're really, like, when can we talk to them? And I was like, let's do that. So we're thinking of getting these, so we're having this communication. Parent teacher conferences, we've talked a little bit about, I think, signing up for them has been great. We have square, they really support for families to be able to attend that for their schedule. Also having the opportunity to either do it in person or virtual, really helps for childcare purposes as well. That's kind of feedback, how it's gotten from people. And that would be Thursday after school, Thursday evening, and then Friday after school. Our PTO has launched a Charleston Gift Wrap fundraiser that took off on Monday. That should raise us some additional funds for the school. We're really grateful for people who have already started their accounts and getting the rolling with their sale. Several families have reached out about the government shutdown. So I've really been trying to get some communication out because there's obviously a lot of rumors and things that we don't know. What Johnson School can control is what happens in Johnson School. So I've been trying to just give them resources on a kind of square that sends people to get the latest information, as well as families who have reached out, having them bring and drop off snacks. Their students, they need a fish. So we did get a good, how deep those so far, but they go quickly. Once someone is out on the street, we have some extra snacks and they turn over in the office. But I feel like instead of this whole thing of who gets a snack and who doesn't, if someone's hungry and they need a snack. That's been kind of our pitching in and trying to help with what we do. Our preschool and kindergarten has been very busy.
That's a good question, sorry. I mean, I'm a superintendent in charge space and I'm unclear as to what's happening with staff, you know, and trying to figure that out, we're doing the same thing. One thing that I'm worrying about is that parents don't, are getting benefits, but don't know when that's gonna stop. Because there's this sort of, you're gonna get some benefits at some time, it's gonna disappear, maybe. Will people come to the table? There's just so much stuff going on. I wonder, I'm wondering with the holiday and if there is a family that needs a chart, like a chart, you know, et cetera. I'm just thinking that, how do you get through from Thursday through the weekend, right? Do they, are they gonna, right? And so if there's anything that the Johnson, I forget, we, we probably should have said something, but if there's anything, yeah. So we did support it, yeah.
So we reached out to the local country in Swansville and they said that they had a pool, something very full.
Of stuff, they have stuff.
Yes, yeah. And then the library just posted and said that they were doing a drive for that same.
They're, they're collecting the food to bring over. So if you would something to, that you like to donate, you can take the library.
It is our library.
But then it goes from there, the entry.
Pretty full, right?
Is in the banquet, so it swamps it in the hunt.
Yeah, so that's available. And then we've also looked at Christmas time, partnering with the anchors, so that we can also make sure for the next season. If they're full now, who knows, if there's shortage, you can do something there. So student council is looking at supporting that and how we can do it. Also Cheryl, the, the, Parker is the organization, I can't remember off the top of my head, but she organized for holiday gifts and meals for families during the holidays. So we, we were right now working on a, like a Google form, trying to make it so that people can anonymously, not to everyone, but like privately, give us that information so that we can go there. This is something that they've done previously. So we're, we're anticipating the numbers might be going up, which is why we're trying to figure out what we can provide. Because if we get an onslaught, then all we're gonna sustain is just fill all of them. So we're trying to be really clear about what we can provide and do with it. Let's get a number for us and then let's go to that, every, for that, for that. But a lot of it was very, very impressive. A lot happening in our preschool and kindergarten lately. Had, they gave them to a truck for the heart fire department. They did a walking trail track, which felt like a really long walk for the priest. It was really great though, so the kids, when they came back, I said, what, I asked them, what did you like? One kid said, we got to stop, trot and roll. And they're all happy with that, so that was fun. They got to explore the track and then they got to use the hose, so that was, it was a hit. Both kindergarten and preschool took those separate days. So that was fun and exciting, nicely to build community between the school and the department. In addition, we just had our Halloween celebration. So the kids, I was very nervous about letting all of this new stuff out, because I wasn't sure how that was gonna go. I've seen it go multiple ways in school. Having really clear expectations and having first story about that information helped, really helped. Because then it would, you'd walk through the door and you have this big draw up thing and I was like, can I see your face? And he was like, oh, shh. And I was like, okay. I'm like, yeah, why, bring it here. But it was really, it wasn't like a battle, because it was like, this is what's expected, what's gonna happen. So it, it was great, and the preschool, kindergarten, still a little bit late, thank you.
Yeah.
I saw pictures, adorable.
The highlight of my Halloween cheer, because I've had a kid in the parade, you know, for the last few years. And even the fire station field trip, Miss Cassidy sent pictures of Ben using the hose with the firefighter. Yeah, so yeah, she sent some pictures, which were nice to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, he had a blast. He's still wearing the helmet that he got, that, yeah. Very thin plastic, you know, the firefighter, yeah. He thinks that the room goes out the way a baseball hat goes, but.
But it's such, it was so fun to see them just feeling so proud. Then they came to the school, they walked through, all the kids came up to the school. And they lined up the hallway and the older kids were like clapping for them, or they were kind of, you know. It was really cute, and then they were doing like a celebrity wave, some of them. Wow, you guys are crazy.
Was that on Halloween?
Yeah.
When they came in from, oh, okay.
Typically, if I bring her up. That's as far as you're going.
Mariana, how is this if we just speak like this?
I can hear you when you speak very loudly, but when you tone down and talk more at a normal level, we can't hear you at all.
Thank you for telling us.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, all right, I'll be yelling. So in addition to Halloween brings a lot of excitement, so we have had to revisit some of our PBIS lessons around expected behaviors in the lunchroom and in the playground. So this week, we are working on reteaching those lessons in our FBA lot during the school week. Some teachers are reinforcing that with kids, along with the monitors who own the playground with the kids, so that everybody can receive message. So that's, that's the, it's mostly, I'd say, the, well, it's actually, it's obviously not preschool, because they're, oh, I'm in a different playground. Kindergarten, we never had any issues with them, it's more for those. It gets a little rough for the kids. And one of the things that I'm finding for analysis of that is they have the after school activities where they're unsupervised on our playground. So then when it's playground time, they don't want to follow the playground rules. Because like, we always pick all, we always play lots, we always, you know. So I'm starting to see these correlations of needing increased supervision after school out there before or with their children. Because it gets really rough and people get it. It's starting to mingle in with like the phone calls from families, like this happened on the playground. After we spend hours investigating it, it was like an after school thing that happened. So it's hard for us to please the playground and we're not. So it's the same kids, same problem, but we need to find a way so that everyone's familiar with the playground. That's kind of what I've, what we can control, what is in. Exciting week, last week with elections here with student council. We had speeches during lunch, right after lunch, it was so fun. The kids were hooting, calling for each other and cheering them on. And one particular student had a really hard time giving their speech in his tears and walked out. Another student followed right out, two minutes later came in, sat, went through a few minutes, got back up. Student held the microphone of the friend. The student got through the speech and the whole room just erupted with cheer. It was just so part of, she did it, she made it, she did through the speech. So it just shows you like how they do care for each other very much. And it's just reinforced that we're supporting them doing what they're doing. It was amazing, it was really great. It was the first time I've ever seen student council in elementary school and having the first, wondering like how it's gonna go. And it was, that was, it was really, really fun. Our kids who were elected, we have obviously first names, President Sperry, Vice President Breda, Frasier Bowie, Secretary Sunny, fourth grade representatives are Joseph and Teddy. Fifth grade representatives are Lila and Murphy. Sixth grade representatives are Galileo and Eugene.
It was a tough contest.
So the last thing that I have to share, we've been working on educator goals and making sure we're getting evaluation pieces in place. The high quality that the teachers have been working at presenting to me, I'm blown away with the dedication that they have to really moving student data and wrapping all of their goals around the school improvement plan. Unbelievable, the work that they're doing and already like thinking about very thoughtfully what, a lot of work being done upfront. I'm like, what's the evidence gonna be? So instead of just waiting at the end and being like, I need some evidence, they're like thoughtfully planning about. I had a tablet that they used and they have run with it and question meetings, partnering with each other, really spending time to be thoughtful with the work that they're doing. Their educator plans, for most part, there's a couple of people still making some fine tweaks to it, but.
And we're still crosswalking with what, like keeping up that contact that I think Ms. Harrington and Ms. Jerry made at Swansville Middle School. To make sure that there's this flow between what's happening with fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth. flow between what's happening in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth.
Well, the, I know that there's been some communication. I'm CC'd on it with sixth grade.
Great.
For science, that's my friend. Um, it's, it's hard because she's not, doesn't have the same prep period as they do.
Right, I'm sure. Yeah.
Arrange that, but they are sharing material.
That's great. Yeah, that's a new land for the Johnsons since I've been here anyway. And I think it's really important for seventh grade readiness. Given the fact that their kids got started earlier.
It used to happen for science.
Did it? Okay.
Yes, it did. And um, it really does make a difference.
That's great. So it sounds like we're getting back to this.
That's why I'm really.
And who's your partner, Ms. Cobus, was your partner teacher when you guys did the same model that, that Ms. Harrington and Ms. Derry are doing?
There were a number of people, we've been doing it so long, the teachers retired along the way, but well, no, they lived the night.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, the, poor Lucas bounced off, of course, which wound up in fifth and sixth.
That's great.
And then, but I went, that's bad.
Yeah.
Because some ready for veterans, so.
And there is also communication. So there's also communication with the fifth grade.
That's good, yeah.
And that's all we have. Actually, I could just share. Rob, you're gonna talk about staffing? Okay, so um, yeah, we had Ms. Katsma started last week. Outstanding. Yeah, as a mother, she um jumped in feet first and uh, the first day, I spent the whole day with her, kind of walking around, had her staff with her through special education meetings. She dove right in, asking lots of questions. Um, so it was really positive. Uh, we've been collaborating back and forth, uh, thinking about like what the next steps are, how do we um make sure that we're, we share the same vision around inclusion and try to get students in the classrooms more, getting their services for the least restrictive environment. And that has been great because the two of us are everything we've done that. Um, so that's, that's kind of happening, but we also, um, her next day that she's coming is Friday. So what she's gonna do is she's going to observe some classrooms and see kind of like what the services actually look like so that she can use that information to then go forward with some of the planning. So um, that's a great, that's a good for her. Um, and then the two new uh OT people there, there should be no interruptions in services, one vending, and then two are coming replacing. So we have Karen Gupta and Ashley with you. They're um coming from Kids in Operation. Kids Shack, that's it. Um, and so they're contracted. So we need to, because of the amount of days.
Yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't get some for all three. We have to actually make some adjustments, get somebody scheduling because of that.
That's okay. Is finding people.
People. Yeah. So I apologize for being late. I take it that we are jumping around a little bit?
We did not do the minutes.
All right.
And so I've got them here uh and by, and then what I put is like some on this meeting, there was no Beth, Greg or Mariana. So I wasn't sure what to do with that meeting actually because of forum. This one, there was no uh Greg or Mariana, this one there was no Beth.
Okay.
No.
I only missed one meeting.
Yep, sorry.
So I think for nine twenty-three.
Yeah.
Patty, myself and Meredith can vote on nine twenty-three and that gives us a forum.
Sorry, Greg.
Nope, no worries. So motion to approve the meeting minutes, or does anyone have any?
Any edits, question?
Nope.
Motion to approve the, the Hahn School Committee meeting minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. So this involved Patty, myself.
Meredith.
No. So we did not have a forum.
Yeah.
At all. But can myself and Patty approve the minutes? I mean, we were the only school committee members.
I know, we have to.
What else is there to do?
Go with it.
Do it now and ask for forgiveness later. So motion to approve the meeting minutes of uh October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
And I second. All in favor? Ten twenty-one.
These I were, I was not there for, so I will leave this to you ladies.
This is Patty, Meredith at that. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for uh October twenty-first.
Second, all in favor? Yes, we have our minutes. Thank you.
All right. And then I think we did, we didn't have a bills because of a personal issue. And we'll get them next time. And then I think we're on new business. Oh, do we have old business?
There's no old business?
Personnel updates we just discussed.
All right, so moving on to new business.
For waiting, so we've got everybody around that are expressing this, but we're looking for two school community members to the non-qualm to be part of a uh, I don't know if I'm sure, which is the committee plan development committee that would include folks from the outside, teachers, community folks, and to do a three or five-year plan or a three-year plus one rolling plan. Uh, there was one in the past and it flamed out two or three years ago.
Yeah.
And uh, that really should come back.
Really? I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's great.
The last one was uh. What I'd be interested in is two school community members to be involved here for that. It might end up on the ground. And um, I would envision because of the holidays coming up and organizational meetings between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then after Christmas holidays, get the ground running to come up with a plan that can be adopted by the end of the year to then guide us for the next uh three or five years. Plus, I believe in rolling. I don't believe you just have one, get it done, and then dream up another one. I, I think you reevaluated every year and said, well, that's been done. This hasn't, and this just came up. And it, it uh rolls and responds to the needs of the school at a certain time. You never know what's, that's gonna happen.
You have talked about the previous month.
I, I, I cannot believe I've mentioned. But um, just to say where we were headed.
Yep.
Rob, let's have a time commitment for the holidays.
I'm just managing organization. So the group, and here's forms, and here's our chart, not reading up all of them, so they're, but just here's the teachers, here's the community members, here's the people you select or whatever it is. And they're gonna come up with, decide this if we're then consolidate. And for, I don't know that I would start brainstorming what the pieces are of that.
So what is the time commitment from there forward?
Do you envision? Plan like that, how expensive it is and how many people. And you can throw together something that spoke to different issues but not have action steps. You know, a good plan has a, you know, a whole set of action steps, but how are you gonna accomplish that?
I mean, do you, do you see like monthly meetings every, for two hours or, you know, what's your vision?
Three other weeks, weekly.
I've done them before. I'm fairly tight-lipped, so I don't like to spend a whole lot of time grudging around stuff. I, I think there is probably four or five major pillars, and then things break off of that for specifics. And individual people can flush those out, they know that. Uh, the administration can flush those out during the back. The teachers can flush those out and get approval with the community. So I think maybe four hour-long session meetings happening after January tenth, a short organizational one before that.
And who's the school lead? Is it you or Heather that's gonna lead the process? Who's the school lead? Is it gonna be you or Heather or somebody else that's gonna be the lead of the process?
I had it as my goal. I had it on my goals last year. And didn't accomplish it. So rather than say, I didn't accomplish my goal, I would say that she'd be on, we would both be on. I'm not in a power position and I'd sit there and say, this is my co-chair.
Okay.
And then I think it's important to have a couple of the elected representatives in the school community. And then same sort of representation from the faculty that they choose. You know, whatever, you going out sitting, you and you, and then leave somebody out. The NTA will be told, please come up with people who can commit time and interest in this. And then probably the selecting possible, the finance committee person.
Eric.
Because some of the goals I think are gonna be driven by the reality of, of running and finding. I don't see that separate. So you can involve the ideas about interventionists and literacy coaches and reality hits and you don't have that. At least if someone signed on to the plan and they're a member of the finance committee or they're a member of the select, they can speak at those meetings for that.
I agree.
And then a, a citizen, you know, maybe ask for volunteers sometimes. Uh, parents, obviously. Uh, even in high school, you probably have kids now. And it's really difficult to have kids, but I think at sixth grade, we'd be able to express them or even a form of kid that came here. I think it's nine, seventh grade grade, and I'd do it. But I wish we'd have this, I wish we'd have that, if we could do that, you know, come back to serve on that community.
I've got an idea of a student. He's a twelfth grader and he went, or he lives at the Hahn, he went all the way through Edge of the West. He's great. He's our biggest.
Oh, talk about sweetening the pie.
His name, his name is Cleo Abraham. Let me, let me ask, let me ask him. Yeah, he's fabulous. He's a twelfth grader at Long Scott High School.
I mean, I think that's.
But he's not.
They add an investment.
He does, yeah.
And uh, if they were here for good things and bad things.
Right.
They could completely remark on what this school will do like in the future. And I, I think they value that. So uh, I've seen good strategic plans and I've seen ones that are posted on the website.
No.
And we look at it and go, you're not doing this. That's not true. We will be safe and secure at the school environment. I don't know why. What's your measure of that? What's the surveys of that? So there's work beyond the plan itself to flush it out. That, that can come back to the folks that have to, you know, do the implementation.
I'd be happy to be part of it, but I also want to open it up to others as well.
Because of qualms issues, it can be one. We will approach that.
I mean, I'm, I, I'm all the, I'm interested in all of this kind of thing, but I've been a fail. So I think that I should get my act together first.
You're not gonna fail.
Compared to my, I was really like an A-level school leader years ago. Um, and I haven't, I haven't had a good, it's been hard to share. It was hard to NTA, I miss some of the NTA.
I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I, I certainly don't have a background in school strategic planning or how to drive a school plan.
I think that's necessary.
If you see the previous, I, I mean, if no one is interested in the second person, I would do it. But if you see the previous plans, just, it'll be like, oh, it, it's not difficult. It's a lot, it's common sense. Finding out what the school needs and how you're going to get. I know ours was, it had a lot to do with updating technology.
I don't want to try and convince someone to do it, but with your former experience here and seeing changes.
Doing the lawyer.
I think it would be very, very beneficial. I think it would be very, very beneficial.
Just your whole, it's gonna change. And then like, he's learning, he's writing.
Too would be great. And it's, it actually is really, it's, it's really fun, have an impact on the direction of the school. Um, I did it for SS Tech years ago. And I, I really got a lot out of it. So you'll, you'll love it.
Strategic planning. That's what I was saying.
Well, there you go.
To be presented to others, just so I'm not, you know, taken away. But I, I'm very just, I'm very disappointed that the last plan, you know, which I'm assuming was a continuation of all of what we've done previously, because it was a whole different plan.
I'm not sure all of them. That is really true. Or that it was.
How long ago is this? How long ago did this strategic plan fall off the map?
I'd have to grab it from the beginning, but I believe it was two or three years before I was.
So it's, it's totally irrelevant.
Year two or three.
It's outdated, but I don't know if it's involved.
I mean, how much has changed since two or three years? I mean, you're talking five years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, there may be parts of it.
Well, yeah, be nice to each other.
I want to make a plug for, I think there's a way to include students without requiring them to go to a meeting with a massive amount of adults.
I was gonna say, couldn't you like interview that person or like have a set like, not, not in an interview like.
Like what if we, you brought a draft twice to the sixth graders and you let them weigh in? I mean, there are some kids in that class, like I'm thinking like Sunny Swoosie, for example, or um uh Mary, you know, some of these girls, Marlo, that have like, uh, impro, this is probably a boy that pop up maybe James. That would have an opinion about some of the things that's presented in child-friendly friendly language, right? Which, you know, of course you all are experts at. And so I think that it would be interesting to get their input, particularly on pieces that are really related to its student life and the student experience at the school. And it could be interesting to have that mark, you know, not instead of like the alum. Rob, I love that idea, but I, I think there is a way to include the sixth grade, you know, as the top of the, the class year.
But maybe we could also do that by like, through the teachers who are gonna be on the committee.
Yeah, they could gather input too.
Yep. You know, intimidating.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think putting like, ten adults they don't mind. Right. So that's all, that sounds like fun. That's great.
Okay, so who, who's on this committee?
The last is Meredith and Greg.
I'll do it if you'll do it.
Didn't, did you volunteer?
I did, but if you'll do it, if, if you want to, I'll do it a little bit today.
Yeah, you, you're doing up on the side of this group.
Honestly, a wonderful thing.
Yes.
I'll be like, hugging it up, but if you need anything.
We need to vote on this?
Feel free to.
You want to vote on this or? Just a little chat, great, perfect.
We want to make it official here, right?
All right, moving on to the fun stuff, numbers.
All right, so uh, I will email this to staff. I've already sent it to the NTA leadership, the NTA leadership. Uh, you folks have a copy of it. And we're gonna spend most of our time looking at the ver, wanna turn that, uh, for that sort of thing. So you picture now.
Mariana, can you see?
Yeah.
If everyone has the slide, they could.
We don't, because we've got several slides, we just recognize them.
Can you see that?
I can see from increase of two S, ESPS and down again.
I can see from increase of two S E S P S and down. I can't see anything above it.
Ah, there we go. I'll turn. How's that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Welcome.
We just can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
You're asking out the different versions of the talking points. There's five different versions.
Okay.
Five different versions of the budget.
Mariana, is that better? Is my voice better?
Yes, sorry. I know, everyone has to like yell.
I will try. Yeah. So when you get this uh, Excel sheet, a bunch of tabs on it. This is the very first one. It's called FY twenty seven JDS School Budget Overview, version one. It's what we saw last time. Then you made some requests of me to uh, look into preschool things and uh, be able to verify how much uh, circuit breaker we had available. So that particular version at the time, suggested a proposed budget of a twelve point three two percent increase. From FY twenty six, total of five hundred and ninety eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. And by comparison, FY twenty six last year, we ended up with a two point three six percent. An increase from twenty five of a hundred and twelve thousand. So just looking at the numbers, that's quite a hill to climb for version one. But I did some reading into version one, we'll see in a second. All salary adjustments were at three point five percent as per the negotiated NDA unit A and B contracts. With an increase of two ESPs to cover the sped IEP requirements, that's a total increase of eighty seven thousand. In version one, there is the inclusion of the expansion of the present ELL math specialist to a full-time position. Right now, that's Katie Pastor and she does uh, point six three in preschool and then point three seven as a ELL math specialist. So what this does in version one and some of the other versions as well, is expand her position to full-time. It also, as Heather had envisioned, has an increase of a full-time literacy code, and an increase of ten thousand in professional development. There's an increase in the contracted service line of forty thousand. And that's to account for the contract we approved last time for the new sped record. There's an increase in the occupational therapist contracted service line of twenty three thousand, three ten. There's a two point five contractual increase in mediated agreements to Swansky Public Schools that increases two and a half percent a year. So that's a, a built-in increase while a new contract is negotiated, which is after next year. For one more full year of that contract. Out of district tuition increase per sped has a total increase of a hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and seven. Out of district sped transportation, increase of a hundred and five thousand, one thirteen. For tuition and transportation is almost three hundred thousand dollars of that five ninety eight, where all we had last year was an additional fund of a hundred and twelve thousand. So just the change in sped tuition and transportation would be a almost impossible hill to climb with a uh, offering up of a hundred and twelve thousand because you have to cut the difference out of the budget over time. The vocational center cost increase in that version one was thirty nine thousand, one thirty eight. And that's because I did not know, it wasn't before the October first requirement for them to publish the enrollments. And I was building in a three percent increase in the vocational budget. You'll see in version two that change. This version used a hundred and fifteen thousand of pre-K funds again to reduce the budget increase. Last year, that was one oh eight. So it says again, but it's inflated by three percent. And then in this version, use a hundred and fifty thousand in circuit breaker. And then I envisioned, maybe we could take some more. And when you get to like version two, you'll notice that. So that's that first tab at the top. And the second tab is all the detail. What that is.
How much is in the pre-K account?
Pre-K account at uh, the end of July, seven one twenty five, is two hundred and forty thousand, one oh six. And then it makes around two hundred thousand as the year goes on. But it takes quite a few offsets from salaries. Like both preschool teachers are not in your budget. They're coming from preschool month. But ESPs are there, are coming from there. So this is a additional draw. I think it can handle the one fifteen at least for one more year. I'm not sure that is something that is sustainable year after year after year.
I mean, how much does it generate profits essentially per year?
Well, I mean, there, there's a theme.
Like how much is it, is it building up in the account?
It was.
But it's not really.
I'm surprised, but I think.
What I'm asking is like, well, what wasn't it gaining each year on average? I think it was, understand like, what are we?
Yeah, I think the issue is that it was never fully loaded with costs.
Yeah, well, it wasn't allocated.
So we never got a sense of what the true bottom line was for whether you're. That's why I'm building a model that we'd understand what it truly costs to run.
So what's the servant, what's the janitor, you know, the custodian for us?
Right, so.
Which I'd like to get to, because I'd like to make this specific.
And that's the third one too. All right, so this is the version we had last. That's all the detail and that was what we were taking from preschool. There were six lines. School health services, we were taking twenty two percent of Cheryl's salary. And a lot of people would say, well, why twenty two percent? But preschool kids are here half a day. They're not twenty two percent of your department. Uh, school guidance, school custodial salary, not supplies, uh, school heating gas, school electrical services and school telephone service. Those were the only lines that were applied last year for a total of eighty three thousand, nine ninety eight. And then they did ask us to cover one insurance for the path, one health insurance. And that was the total of the one fifteen, five thirty. So don't worry about the detailing. I think the best thing is now to say, all right, you're coming back with a different version. The version two, the proposed budget, is an eight point seven three percent or an increase of four hundred and thirty two thousand, nine seventy five. Again, last year with one twelve, salary adjustment, same statement, I don't repeat all those. This version two includes the expansion of the ELL math specialist to full-time and the addition of the full-time literacy coach. It's an increase that these are the same thing for you. The difference at the bottom is we're gonna apply a hundred and thirty five thousand more in circuit breaker than the one fifty to make two hundred and eighty five in circuit breaker. That helps lower that percent then.
But Rob, it said that in version one too. It says you still have two thousand circuit breaker.
Well, I was speculating I could do that. I think I know it is possible to end the version one. This one says, version two is the only live one. Now, version one has gone into history. We're now looking at version two, three, four, or five.
What's the, what's the detraction in using two hundred and eighty five thousand circuit breaker funds?
What's the attraction?
Detraction, like why, what, what's the?
Nothing really, because by law.
Right.
You're getting it because of the size of your expenditures for sped tuition and transportation.
Yep.
And they give you, they're supposed to give you seventy five percent back on both numbers. Once you reach what they call foundation, that's fifty some value.
Right.
So what the state basically says is.
And then you get it, you should use it.
The Hahn should be able to handle for law groups in this out-of-district placement, fifty thousand in the only pound funds. Beyond that, if we can do it, we'll give you a seventy five percent Rob's tuition back and seventy five percent of his transportation back year later.
Right.
And that's how it builds up.
Yeah.
And if you don't spend it, like the money we get this year, if we don't spend it this year, have to spend it next year or it's gone, gets returned to the pot.
But I'm not seeing what the difference is then between one or two. Is it just that you might have to use the circuit breaker?
The two are saying, we are gonna do that.
It's definitely.
One doesn't use the one thirty nine.
Version one says, uh, possibly.
Yeah.
And when I back and looked at it, I ran the numbers. There's a tab on the, on the sheet a little further on that says out of district.
So and then the other difference between version one and version two is that that vocational center cost increase of forty thousand isn't actually happening, right?
Right, because it turned out there wasn't fourteen kids like there were two years ago. There wasn't eleven kids like last year for the sixth.
So the difference between one and two, we don't even need to talk about it.
Yeah.
On to number three.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And these at least include the fully loaded new positions. Still a fairly high number. I would, in terms of what we talked about last year, that depends on how we wanna advocate for that. Um, the one other thing.
But it doesn't, version three doesn't include a literacy coach.
Version two does.
Yes.
There was some coach and the expansion of the point three seven math ELL specialist to full-time.
Yep.
And that's why it's fairly pricey compared to others. So, and here's what I did for your question about, could you distribute the money a little bit? And what I did was say, here's the six lines we did last year. If you wanted to accomplish the same amount of draw, these are other lines that are affected by preschool. Supervisor office salaries, I did not twenty two percent, I did eight point eight three percent. Uh, principal's office salaries. Heather not only oversees the preschool, but she's paid to oversee the preschool. And it takes a fair amount of her time. So seventeen thousand dollars of her salary will be applied to preschool time.
My bigger concern Rob wasn't whether we're allocating properly.
Yeah.
It was just that, like, are we now making this like a losing, like, is it losing money at this point? I don't want that to happen either. Like, it needs to be self-sustaining. And if we're drawing so much out of it, then in three years, we're gonna be like, oh my God, preschool broke, like.
But remember what you did last year, you did build a, a little bit of escalator to like a two point five percent figure. So as long as you don't stray from that and you hold the enrollment of the, you know, forty kids or whatever, you're probably okay. If the enrollment went down and you start to have a problem, you just have to adjust. But think this number, we could, not to call it to give more and more of, but we could follow on this path for a period of time.
I guess my thought is, we know we're gonna have to go and ask, beg and plead for a bunch of money. Like, so do we wanna drain an account that in two years, we can't be asking for more money again? Or do we wanna just be saying, no, instead of X amount, we need Y? And I'm not saying one way is better than the other. I just wanna put it out there that like, I wanna make sure that the preschool, again, that they're still gonna have ninety grand in the account, right, after this? Well, we can't be doing this again next year.
Remind?
So like.
Are we asking for money and how much money are we asking for? Is this the conversation?
Yeah, right now it's a.
A hundred and twelve.
Right now, it's a four twenty three.
So that's.
An increase of four twenty three.
Right, last year we were given a hundred and twelve thousand, one oh one.
And, and how much can we cover out of this four twenty three of the school budget? Or is this all?
This is all. All school budget.
So who are we asking?
Over, that's over the school.
So we do have to ask the town for four twenty three thousand?
Yeah, yeah. So my point is like, if, if the four twenty three is just gonna cut it this year with us drawing a hundred, a hundred fifteen thousand from the pre-K.
Right.
Then where does that leave us next year or the year after? Are we gonna do the same boat again? Like, I don't wanna be doing.
Yes, except that we know from the forecast scores that they weren't, they weren't, is where, where exactly we want.
No, they were, they were, they were poor. So, so now's the time, but now's the time.
So like for me, Greg, like the tie-in of a full-time, which back in literacy coaches.
I got you. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that we should be asking the town for more money and not sucking.
Paying from the preschool.
The prepaid, because we're gonna need that money.
No, I, I, no, I know what you're saying.
And I've been, I don't do it wrong anymore. I get a small. Like in broad, this isn't have anything to do with you. This is not a, a, this is a, we need money and where are we gonna get it from? That's my point. It's like, if we're gonna go to the town and ask for a slew of money.
Right.
I'd rather ask for a slew of plus.
Right, yeah.
Than, than the bare minimum of what we can get by this year.
And how much last year did we ask them for?
We didn't ask for enough.
Well, we asked for.
And from what I heard around town, we didn't ask for enough.
What we got was, oh, you gotta apply preschool fund. You need to do that.
Yeah, we need to do that. At every corner, and exactly what we're gonna do again this year.
Three, six percent.
You can do that for one year, but you can't do it for three years. You're gonna keep drawing off your safety account.
I did think, Greg, when I ran the numbers, it was in it, it was a two point five percent escalator. And what we're drawing and what we draw next year versus what came in, that the model couldn't handle that.
The four twenty three?
No, the uh.
This one, the.
The one fifteen draw, that one fifteen draw, the four twenty three is a result of all the budget lines. Salary lines and supply lines and whatever. So the line that we're committing, starting last year, was a hundred and eight thousand of preschool funds. Beyond what we already would do. And this year's is not one oh eight, it's fifteen.
Because I can already say you, Rob, I don't need you to keep going.
Yep.
Version four and version five, I'm not gonna support.
About on version four.
And I, I put those in there. I don't put up a lot of allegiance. If I go to version three.
Version three I may, but I'm not inclined to support. I'm of version two. Because we did this last year. We, we said, okay, we're gonna do a half. And it clearly was not enough based on what we saw in those forecast scores. All right, so this town, this town either wants a good school system that they can stand behind, or they don't. And they can, I'll, I'll put that in a vote of town meeting. I'm not gonna.
It's not a damn.
And, and I don't think that we should be doing a hundred fifteen from the pre-K funds. I think we should be doing what we think a fair, a fair assessment for the, what they used last year and that's it. And because if we keep doing that, it's not gonna last.
Yeah, I care about Greg's argument for the pre-K. I also like just any model where constantly borrowing more than you're putting in there is a problem.
Seen that that doesn't work.
Right. But I will say this, I think we do need the full-time position for literacy coach. I think that would seem good in the academic program. We are, no matter what we do this school, we essentially are school. And we can't do that, right? And we don't, we're not.
I was shocked by our forecast scores, okay? For such a small town, such a small community, we can't make classes of eight, get better scores on those tests or something seriously wrong. And we should all look in the mirror.
I was shocked by that.
I was shocked by those scores. And I, I will stand up at town meeting and advocate for version. But I think we need to reduce the amount of pre-K funds that we're taking. I really do. I don't feel comfortable doing that year after year. It's like drawing on your savings account every month to pay your credit card bill. It's, it doesn't last.
So we did envision, when I asked Alice about, we can move, the town minister, town to validate, to the off-the-record non-form setting, uh, meeting of the minds.
I know.
And, and she said she couldn't do that before November nineteenth because of the special funding. Right after that, she was gonna start that. And she didn't know how much was available. In terms of what new property sales and all that kinda stuff is generated, that has to be then shared among all family partners. Unless they pass one over.
That's what's gonna be real.
Well, I thought that it needs a.
Education part.
Like where, where are they in all of this? I know that they're a part of the town, but.
But they wouldn't help the operating budget. They might help with one-time expenses like a van, a garden, this or that. That's usually what foundations do, the foundation.
They're just not.
I don't have that.
Yes, significant.
Like, yeah, Phoenix's foundation fund is not helping out for us. It's one time, we're thinking short time, like a short-term specialist is getting the.
That's in a hot education.
Usually, I'm not on the education fund, I'm not next to them. Like, that's usually, every school district usually has a foundation attached to it.
Yeah.
And that's usually what they're.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it, it used to be Northeastern and we had a working relationship with them.
Did we ever send them a letter asking them for, did they perform? I appreciate the response.
No.
And we sent them the letter, the specific letter, and they.
Last year.
Yeah. Or the amount of the, all things, if I always eat first.
I've had coyotes in my backyard for, trying to put my dogs.
They're, they're all around. You've got to think that.
So.
The thing I wanna show.
I was just gonna say.
Hold on, everybody focused.
Is in version three, which I took the political privilege to say, both in the third of the day, but it doesn't. Uh, whether, like, got a clear head nod from Heather or not, but in version three.
Heather's not gonna vote against the full-time literacy coach.
No.
And I'm more likely to not.
I mean.
Built with anything, I just know what we experienced last year, just getting to the point where after that.
But that's not gonna work this year.
We're gonna have to.
No argument.
It's a, it's a. We could all hope it's not gonna work. Correct, and we're, a hundred twelve grids getting us anywhere, so like, wouldn't we? And again, like, I'm.
Depends somewhat on what's available for fun. There's some debt that might be retired and all that.
This isn't a numbers game anymore.
No, we don't win.
It's just not, like, and so you need money.
Yeah.
This isn't like, oh, a tweet here, a tweet there, and you're gonna find five hundred grand.
Like, maybe you should have that off the record discussion, I think as soon as the nineteen.
Yeah.
We have Allison, she'll have her number. Many people who can, uh, join that without us being a problem, it would be important.
I think we should also just be very open with the people in this town, in the parents, in the community, like.
We may have to send them something.
We will have to. I think we're gonna have to throw a meeting in there.
Like, you all want this fabulous school system, well, it doesn't happen for.
You gotta give your friends too.
It just doesn't, and.
Help the town.
You know?
I, I think honestly, the only way this is gonna happen is if the town, but the override should be on. Because it's not gonna be.
But and again, I don't, if we're doing an override, that's my point. We're doing an override. I don't wanna suck a hundred fifteen grand out of preschool. Like, that's not, that we.
Yeah, we should pull it out. And we do need to see.
A portion of it, you know, maybe, maybe fifty grand. Maybe fifty grand makes sense. Maybe it's been way undercharged for three years. I don't know, you know, but.
But we also need a window and.
I wanna do. And like, what do we expect for next year? I mean, this year we have high enrollment, but that did, that's very, very quickly changing year to year in this town, like. All of a sudden, you've got people who have, not even now, but yeah, I mean, it's three thousand residents. All of a sudden, you've got six kids, because that's just luck in the draw. I mean, you know, we're coming off of the COVID boom, like, I don't know, maybe. But that's anywhere in Massachusetts. I mean, come on, we, we keep saying that, oh, we want it to be.
But it helps if they just send their kids to a preschool.
We wanted to be, you know, cost effective. My wife and I moved out here because it costs as much to get a house out here as it did a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment in East Boston. Okay, where you, like, so let's not fool ourselves. We're in a very, very expensive part of the country, in Massachusetts, like, anywhere from here to Worcester. Is dreadfully expensive, okay? That's a choice that we all make. But if the people who live here want their houses to be what they think they're worth and all of that, we need a good school system. And those MCAS scores were not a good school system, so.
Rob, is there any way, would the fi- the financial front exist too heavy to kind of hold back a little, even the last five years? And see how much money came in and out, um, percentage wise of the, for the year, the preschools, high schools.
Uh, the preschool one is going off of, uh, whatever the future salaries were, uh, need aid. Uh, couple other things there, but generally, that account's extreme. And I think that is what only Allison saw was that account is carrying an act. And he said, like, this can't be every single year.
Draw. But it's not gonna be an accurate assessment of what does it cost.
Yeah, because we can say we're only gonna use thirty percent of the overage after all the expenses, so we're gonna use forty percent or twenty percent.
I think it's really, yeah, the color, state is better, just because of the, the nature of the cost. That, uh, those have skyrocketed. For six, seven, eight kids who deserve the programs that they're in. But they're very costly. The one in, that's in Boston, is a hundred and seventy or eighty thousand dollars. And the transportation to that, between, uh, the daily part plus an aid in the, in the van.
But you know, I was talking about the preschool. So the preschool, I just think, for us, like, let's say the preschool brings in three hundred thousand dollars. And we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on supplies and the salaries, right? Then these are not true numbers. I'm making this up. Then we know that a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, fifty percent of that we're able to keep for profit. And then over time, the, if the school committee would see like, okay, we were able to have a hundred and fifty this year, two hundred this year, a hundred this year. We can make a choice about how, how much percentage-wise we wanna spend out of that profit. Like, maybe it stays in equilibrium and we, as long as we only use twenty percent of it, right? Over time, and then we can sort of financially forecast, um, where the preschool is going in terms of enrollment numbers. It would make us, then we'll know, like, I don't know if a hundred and fifty is a big number, or a hundred and fifteen is a big number, a small number, a B number, right?
Yeah.
I, I have no window there. So it's also hard, while I, my gut is that I absolutely agree, I agree with you because of some other thinking. Uh, you know, that we shouldn't just keep, if we're, if you're, if our leader is telling us we're using too much of the preschool money. Then we do need to like, then do this, but, but then there's a larger question I have is, how do we know how much money we're playing? But I'm sure because of the way that the accounting is done.
Yeah, we're all just throwing a dart.
Right.
And that's my concern. It's like, I don't wanna just keep drawing from it, and then one day stand there and be like, oh god, you know, we're getting twenty grand in a month. And that's not gonna cut it.
We're sitting on six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, I don't want that either.
Right.
I don't want that either.
That's just enrollment for the draw. Because that's where the.
We need to be prepared for that, so that we can carry a teacher for a year or two.
You, you definitely adjust your number down in anticipation of a enrollment draw.
Yeah.
It may not happen. Therefore, you have a few more.
You need a safety buffer, you know?
Right.
I mean, what do they say to people? Have a six-month buffer. Like, we need to have a buffer, and I don't know what that buffer needs to be.
Right.
I have no idea.
And right now it's very close to the bone. I think it can survive in the present conditions of the present enrollment and the two and a half.
I don't like close to the bone.
Gonna be honest.
I know, but that's why, I think.
Yeah.
We, we all acknowledge that, that in order to make version two or version three work, we're going to the town for a whole slew of money. So let's make our ask once, and make it sustainable for years, not a year. I don't wanna be back there next year begging.
Right, right.
I think what's here too is, in our big ask in version two, is.
The literary coach.
So it's minimal for.
Keep us on par with our neighbors.
Right.
Okay, I grew up, I grew up three towns over from here, and my town used to compare ourselves to Marbella. And to Swampscott, you know, like, what are these towns doing? I mean, that's what people do, and that's what they gain when they're going to buy a house, or. And so.
Yeah.
I appreciate all your work, Rob.
Yeah, I, I don't see why, absolutely.
I could. The only thing I wanna at least be able to ver- be able to verbalize is that in version three. I'll try not to be too editorially about it, is that it does expand the ELL math specialist. To a full-time interventionist position, which would include a literacy piece as well as ELL math. So that's a thirty, forty thousand dollar increase, because then a K D pastor would not be in the preschool. We'd have to hire a part-time preschool teacher. So if, version three doesn't do the full load, doesn't expand her position and do a literacy coach. Version three says, well, you've got a part-time ELL math specialist, even though we wanted a full-time.
ELL or ELA?
Yeah.
ELA.
ELA.
But in, but Rob, an ELA math specialist in my mind does not, does not have, yes, they obviously jump in on reading. But it's a broader position to talk about how they're accessing reading, writing, critical thinking, things like that, whereas a literacy coach. Is the coach that diagnoses, why are some kids not reading well enough on par for grade level, fast enough? Accelerated reading, and we, and there is so much, right? If we wanna be current in the world. Then we have to be equal to dive in on the science of reading. I mean, when I joined school community, whole classes were still losing thoughts and finding out. And so I think that having a literacy coach to help guide us on the cutting-edge practices of the science of reading. Bringing that in from the get at preschool, right? Making sure our kids are ready to transition over to Swampscott feels like a critical addition to an ELA, um, advanced specialist. Like him, I think these are three game-changing positions that would elevate the work. Like, think of how much Kayla Harrington and Tessa Bering have done. On, you know, curricular work and, and the work that they've done the last couple of years, and they're young and hungry. And so this type of position would just elevate that and the leadership that, that they have.
Were those MCAS scores like broadcast widely? Because, like, did you get a reaction to it? Because like, I didn't see much about it, honestly.
Reaction for my.
A little bit of touch of.
I didn't, but I didn't, I, I personally didn't see anything.
They see the.
About.
Exactly.
That's, that's what I'm all about.
Yeah, I'm sure it was a full blown.
But like, did it go out on parent square to say like, this is what our, our MCAS scores were?
So that each score goes directly to each home, for each student as well. So, and you come in the mail, it goes, it's a report.
Oh yeah, the report comes in.
For your child. Your kids have.
But your head's.
Okay, yeah. But like, I guess that's my point, is like, who in town even knows what those scores were? Like, fine, it was a story in the item, like, so that means.
Come on.
That, I, yeah, no, I, I understand that.
But you're saying.
We need to put things right in front of people's face and say, this is what the schools.
Five years. This, not back to two thousand and nineteen.
We need money.
Yeah.
Okay. I think is an important message, because right now, people don't know, like, why do they need a literacy coach? Why do they need this? Why do they need that? Like, it's because we had poor scores. But if people don't know that we had poor scores, then they're not gonna support this. Like, we need to make it very widely known what those scores were, because they were shocking to me. And, but nobody knows that. I've been at parties recently for Halloween, talking to people about this. They have no idea. No idea, that what are you talking about? Like, our kids haven't done, like, yeah, the kids above them have, like, this is what it's coming out to. Twenty percent compared to forty-four percent, like, they don't know. And when you don't have the information, it's really hard to swallow things like this.
Yeah.
But if you're aware and know why we're doing this, then I think it's a lot easier for people to summon. You know, and that, that's, that's from the parents of students all the way to residents who don't have students. Like, everyone nowadays knows what an MCAS score is, and I think that they'd be shocked to hear what the scores were. And I don't think that just Zach and Lynn item is sufficient, like, was it on the Nahat residents page? Was it on the Nahat mom and dad's page? Like, and I know you guys don't have access to that, I'm not pinning this on you, but I'm just saying, like. If we want the school to be supported, we need the town to know what's going on here. And I don't think that they do. I don't think that the parents in the school.
I think one thing I wanna add is, is what's important is communication from teachers, honestly, with families. And that, I think, this year, I don't, I don't know what was here before, but I know the message that I've had, even with progress reports. They shifted the progress report, so it's really clear and we align it with like an M P S. Um, standards, so that families know kids are either reading, exceeding, uh, partially reading or not reading. And I've had families come in and say. My kid always had, but it's always getting removed, like, now they're not, like, what's going on here? And it's because we're factually reporting, we're not gonna just give M's to keep everybody happy. If your kid's either meeting or not, and this isn't anything personal to any teacher in our building, it's not personal at all. It's, it's personal to the child, and then how do we move that? So that's part of the message, right? Is that when we have these conversations with them, we're being really clear about what their child is performing. And what they're getting for, for support and what resources they have. We'd love to have more interventions. Like, I have ESPs that are doing interventions. That's, that's not a qualified teacher. They're doing an amazing job, but they're not certified teachers. We really need that support. So I think getting the MCAS information out, MCAS is one data point. But there's so many other data points.
I was gonna say this, I don't wanna put too much of this, it's just not.
Right.
It's the other data.
Well, that's it. In the other, when I, I speak about the progress reports, like, we're not even toward a four pride yet. But that information and getting that out, those are true data points that are active right now. Like, these are things that are happening. So we're looking at that, and we're using our star data, and we're using our devil. That's real-time data that's happening, and are we making growth? Are we not making growth? How do we do that? We've gotta be really strategic with that. And a lot of that is around scheduling, it's around the program that we've put in. And that's where these things came up, right? These are where my recommendations came in the world news, because we don't have those people in place. It, it just can't function. And like you were saying, like, it's a minimum of, like, you're talking comparing to other communities. Every other community has this. So how do we make it so that we at least have the foundation? We're not trying to put, fancy top on our house in addition, we're trying to build the foundation.
And I'm not trying to be gloom and doom. I just think that, again, if you want people to support something and put money towards something and all that, they need all the information. And I don't think people have the information right now.
They don't.
I think that people are clueless, and they just think everything's fine and dandy over at Johnson School.
Yeah.
And why do they need an extra four hundred thousand dollars? And it's like, well, maybe because things aren't so fine and dandy, but we can fix it.
We have the edge.
We can fix it.
Getting them to know all the things, right? So MCAS is one piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
There's so many pieces that.
And we have some great things going on here. I mean, greenhouse, the, the celebrations, the community, it's a great community.
With the change in the math book, that math program that was being used here was outdated and antiquated.
But if there's one thing I've learned about living here, is that it is a tight-knit community, and people do want the people here to succeed and for the community to succeed.
Care about this.
But they, they need the information to, to stand behind it.
So this is gonna be a fight, and it's fine, it's gonna be a fight. So my question to you is, is this enough? To give you the foundation? Because I look at it as, we're not gonna be able to fight this one year, year after, year after that. So is this everything that could, could go?
Yeah.
I'd rather go with a bigger ask and have them whittle it down. I mean, the way you negotiate things is you start at the moon.
Yeah.
And you get whittled down to react, like.
Yeah.
So.
I think this, for functioning for staff. Would be very helpful. I think where we don't put a lot of investment in this beyond is knowing that we are going to, to purchase. H Q I M, and when we talk about the original science of reading, and H Q I M, high-quality instructional materials. That we. The requirement of the department of ed and having that, but we just got U R I for math, that was pricing. That was, that was some big money that we.
So how much is the language aspect of that?
I, I think that.
Yeah, how much is the language aspect of that?
But science, we, we got a new science, from everyday science, right? Or, what was it called? The science of the box? I thought that was H Q I M.
Mystery science.
Yeah, is that you wanna do something else?
Well, I think we need to do, what I think we need to do is do an assessment of what our results are, what the curriculum is. We have to be looking at what is approved through D E S I. Are we needing those approvals?
Yeah.
Um, you know, we could be doing Open S I E D, or we could be doing Mystery Science. We have to look at the ed reports and see what's been approved and the loop.
Exactly, like you did last year.
Exactly.
But like, let's figure. But like, let's figure out what we need to do with English under two years.
Yeah, imagine if we could use grape lines.
Fill it in, like.
So what I did this year, just remember I told you I did fifth, sixth grade, having that's a, we're using EL education, which is a free curriculum. But then when, once we're in it, really not so free, because you're gonna buy all the books, you're gonna buy all the material. So what I've been doing is subsidizing what I can and trying to use a lot of online resources to support that, um, and going unit by unit. So like, how much money can we get right now to purchase a book? We're talking just a class of fifteen kids or thirteen kids for one grouping. What if it's a class of like second grade comes up to them? Now we have to purchase more books. So we're, we're like, we're just like keeping ahead of the curve a little bit, and we haven't even touched the other grades for the year. And we didn't even knew and audit for it. We just went on the query, and found of them, the choices are free. And said, this is free. This is a lot freer than Amplify or any of the others. That meets the expectations of DESI. So we'll use that for this year to, to kind of pick off five six, so that those kids are getting the science of reading in private. So if that does not encompass, that whole science of reading is not a subject.
So can you do a version two A that shows us what that includes?
I, I can, but what's gonna happen is we don't, we have to pick a, collect a, you'd have to go through a selection house of.
But could you, but could you ballpark it a little bit?
If you were so.
Look at cost of A, B, C.
And like find an average.
So if you look at the different programs, we feel, um, the one that we're using right now, so we're talking free plus books. That's the point. Then if you talk Amplify, so say Amplify was selected, and you were doing CKLA for that, you could be talking two hundred thousand of those. So that, there's that much of a discrepancy in programs that aren't like, oh, it's gonna cost you this ballpark. I think we need to jump in. I mean, that's one of the parts of the pilot with them is that to even assess, are they making progress using this? Even if they are, and but it is endorsed by DESI, if they're making progress, I say we go with that one then, right? It's also the closest to the type of instruction that teachers have done, used in the past. New approaches have been out, but it ramps it up with a level of questioning, so it's a little less, um, prescribed, I think. Like Amplify is a very scripted program, and so you want to say what you say, how to say. And their lessons are really, really fun. I use this in my act district. Results? Yep, they're great results. This one here, it just adapts closer to what teachers are used to in their teaching practices. So now everyone is like, what's the results? What are we doing? What's the, what's the outcome of that? So I'm not, I'm, I'm a little hesitant. I wanna be like, yep, we're just gonna stick with this one without first seeing like, what are we getting for results? And is it working? How closely are we sticking to, what are the resources? How do I get the books? Some kids are reading it online, and they don't have copies. Like, we're trying to like nickel the diamond, you know what I mean?
But I guess what I'm hearing is like, maybe that's where we save the pre-K funds for in a year or two. And like, that's why we need that money now from the town and not to drain it, because we're gonna need to do this in a year or two. And we can explain that to people, like, we understand that there's this money there, but we have not a plan for that money, but yeah, you need to change. And I remember you saying that you didn't wanna do the language program thing now, because they're trying to do Ureca Square now, and it's like, how much can we put on these teachers to change?
Which is why it worked out for Tessa, because she's not teaching math.
Yeah.
So we have her doing, jumping right in and supporting her with that. But I would like to fill this budget. I know it's gonna bump it up. Whether that be physical books, and I don't know if the term is now even. It's kind of weird. So typically, like, the, the HQIMs for ELA.
Wish they would go back to regular books.
I do too, but I, I will.
And it also helps with retaining working memory. I mean, using your working memory is a good intention. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, I wanted to also bring up the foundation again here, because the buying a new curriculum, the upfront costs are usually more than the maintenance costs. It's new books that you would have to buy for an additional class, you know, if workbooks and things like that, that are, that are use, usable. And I wonder if that's an area where the foundation dollars, if there is, if there are foundation dollars, if go inside into the any app at all, but whether they could help with a curriculum purchase if you wanted to buy the Amplify or the Grape Lines or something like that.
Yeah, cuz it's a one-time.
Exactly.
Just on the fly right now, thinking about it, like, we could reach out to these different companies and just get some ballpark figures for what each one of them is. But not guaranteeing, like, oh, it's gonna be this amount, you know?
But at least then we know, like, yeah, it ranges from X to Y.
And we build something.
And some of them are like online. That, that's one thing that came into my last decision, is we purchased CKLA. Then once our, our three-year contract ran up, it was like that pricing. It was like almost three million dollars, like a big city, right? So we were like, whoa, what should happen? Anyway, whatever it was, it was astronomical, and everyone was like, wait, where's this money coming from? What's happening? I thought we bought it. No, we bought it.
Like a three-year subscription.
And now it's up again. So we have to think about those things too. It's like, how much is something? Just like when we were talking about STAR last week, when the, we sit over the assessment. I'm like, okay, we get this discount. How long is this discount for? Is it one year, three years, three years? Well, if you buy so much in advance, you could get five years at that cost. But if you don't, next year, you lose your discount, you lose this. So I'm like, okay, you can do pricing for those that we can, if we see what we have. So we, it's like trying, that's where we run into, like, if we don't have that money to secure these things, we're always
I guess the other thing that I would also like to raise just generally is that we're not the only town around who's talked about or had to do an override. Like, this has been something that's been happening around us ve-very regularly. I know other towns voted for it last year and approved it. You know, I mean.
Yeah, traditionally overrides go through because people do hear. And particularly about the school, and I think they also understand, um, the cost of special education and how it does gather so significantly within a year. Like, that's, I think that's really, they know those things, and, um, they, they not good wood, they come through.
Well, my, my concern with the circuit breaker that is due is we're assuming that the state has.
It uses forty percent on transportation, which is the lower number that they've been last two years. And then at the end, like last year, they found the difference, the seventy-five, and threw us a twenty-five thousand dollar dollar. So it, this two eighty-five is built on that forty percent transportation. They have honored the seventy-five percent tuition. There were years when they didn't. But they have been pretty, uh, solid on that tuition. It's only a few years back that they added transportation at all for the circuit breaker. So I think the two eighty-five is a safe number, because even if it isn't sort of helping you lower your percent, if you get that money, you don't spend it. You're gonna lose it that next year. It's gone.
As long as it comes.
I mean, none of these things in this setup are, and I use the term close to the bone. That one's close to the bone too. It's figured on whose enplacements right now, inflated to what next year's cost will be. You're gonna see.
But that's to recover for this year, right? We get it next year from this year's cost.
Correct. And that, I know exactly what that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Unless.
So you're saying that's, that's a projection of.
There could be a new kid come online, or a kid who, uh, i- isn't around anymore. And therefore, that number would be deflated. Um, I know what's supposed to be for the kids this year inflated over where they would be if they were at the same places next year, and what that would generate. And I feel okay with the tuition. Preschool one, I could be convinced to massage that back, um. And I can show you the, the numbers on that, and, you know, get it down below a hundred thousand or whatever. In additional funds, because remember, we're already doing the salaries and the whatever, a hundred and sixty thousand, and we're putting another hundred thousand.
That just sounds like the ultimate rainy day account that we should be preserving. Is, if we're gonna go beg for money, let's not use the rainy day account as well.
Last year's preschool balance had, I have to look it up for sure, it was close to four hundred thousand. So when Tony Barletta looked at it, when Allison and the other, they said, you guys are carrying forty, four hundred thousand dollars. You can easily put X into there. And it's like, maybe this year, not every year, certainly not over time. But to get through last year without an override, no problem. But I would have argued that carrying that kind of balance in that account, just having it sit in a revolving fund probably wasn't the best use of those funds. They should have been brought down to a, a fail-safe point or whatever.
But I think at that point, Tony, uh, the old superintendent was also dealing with a bunch of COVID money, so he didn't need to do that. Times, times change. And like, we need to adjust with that.
Even the money in your budget though, uh, there was a, a level of pride over turning it back into the town. We asked for.
But again, my point is, if you're gonna go beg for money, beg for everything you know. Don't use your safe, your rainy day account as well. Okay? That's my thought. And I don't speak for the whole school.
But I agree with you, Greg, and I, I'm a version two fan myself. I'm not a version three to five fan. And so, and we're still a work to do. So it sounds like the next version of this that we'll see will have in some of those ballpark costs for curriculum. And a, and a look, maybe if you could look and talk to the Nahat Education Fund people and see whether there's anything possible there from their white parties and, you know.
I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but it's gonna turn up eight point seven to probably a ten.
Yeah, but it's not the twelve, and so.
I sent her the very first.
The first one, which was almost thirteen percent, so.
Got better.
And she knew there were things coming, like a closer look at circuit breaker and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
And we didn't know Essex Tech yet.
But again, we delayed this a year. We delayed this whole issue a year, okay? We could have pushed harder last year to get the full-time ELA math person, and then we wouldn't be dealing with that this year, but we didn't. And so now, it's all coming home at the same time.
We didn't jettison. We didn't get at least a partial position. We had to. We had to pull puppet strings.
And we're gonna keep.
Get that in.
We're gonna keep fighting, Rob.
I'm fine with that. So I understand that my expectations of margin orders that my dad would say to me are to take version two and add a placeholder of some kind for some of the things that are talked about, uh, curriculum-wise and stuff like that, whatever that number is. Ten, twenty thousand, or whatever. And then everything else holding the same except a possible reduction of the preschool block.
I wanna see what the actual costs of that preschool are and what we're actually generating in the profits based on of like, let's not do a twenty-two enrollment, do a fifteen enrollment. That brings it down a little bit to an average, so that we can kinda see what we're expecting over the next couple of years, so that we're not draining it dry. But I don't mind putting some into it, but like, can't we come up with some general estimates of projected?
Well, I did, based on if we had forty-three kids this year, and you built in the two point five percent, uh, adjustment to the fee, which had never been in there. It had been a flat fee, and it just stayed there. So at least we've built that, not a huge slide slope, we've built a two point five into it. And I used the same number of kids. I didn't say, well, maybe ten percent less. And you could do that, and that would then have to make that one fifteen to that.
I think we have a very high enrollment right now in preschool. That's just my own, from what I see going on, you know? I don't know if that's gonna continue. It could, I mean, but they're basically full classes, so.
And also to keep in mind for preschool, if our special education numbers go over five students, you know, but can't be twenty kids in class if you're gonna be doing fifty.
The other thing is, you're, you're not charging a student in preschool who's special ed. Their fee is zero dollars. So of the forty-some kids in that program who identify as sped, there is no tuition charge at all. There's zero.
So I think forty-three isn't a reasonable number to carry. You know, it probably should be thirty or something.
The zero is already built into that.
Okay.
What I'm saying, the bottom of that equation says income.
I guess what I'm saying is, let's, let's be conservative on the numbers for preschool and non.
Downsized that one fifteen to something lower than a hundred.
Yeah, I mean, again, I wanna see like some actual, like, am I making sense about like the costs and the, the income and, so that we can say, all right, let's keep it at, let's keep the preschool account at a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, and whatever's above that, let's use on this, you know? And that's counting what we're gonna generate for income this year and costs and expenses and all that, right? Like, and just try and, that's what I think, is hold as a rainy day account for that.
Rob, Rob, I'm thinking about what it'd be just to do a five-year analysis, just take what your enrollment was in preschool for over the past five years, which is what the total income was per year, and not the expense side. Well, you've got your fixed costs, and then we can come up with an allocation that makes sense for the five, because we have the budgets for the past five years.
Yeah, but that's why, if we know what it brought in, and then what we think the expenses are, then we can figure out what the expected, you know, net income is basically. That is the accounting here. I should be letting her talk.
You have a good job. I'm more than happy to do the analysis.
Just so that we know, like, okay, we can pull X amount out of this thing each year and stay safe and have a buffer would be good enough.
The buffer part, yeah, we're gonna have to, I'll have to build a buffer in the rate now. There, there's not a buffer into it. It's a, uh, even shelving, basically, right at this point. And we were pretty open and honest about that last year, when the first draw was taken, that this can't be a yearly thing.
That's why I don't wanna do it again.
And then I, I know.
You're not adopting it anyway. It was a, you wanted me to come back with, with sort of how else, what other lines were affected by preschool and allocate that out. So instead of twenty-two percent from this, it's now a leap from more lines. Yeah, we can do that.
But what we can do though, is I, I know Allison, everyone else is tied up with the town meeting, three A. But we can shoot for a date, because I do think she asked for a date.
She asked for it. I thought she, but what I saw was her saying, I think, the same to me.
We can't do it now, but. But we can.
And then we could meet, but she didn't put out a date.
No, but I think we can.
And that was more once she found, not sure if she had completely bought into the the theory that there'd be this one selectman, one finance committee, one school board member, the school administration completely, she didn't say one way or the other, whether she agreed in that model or not, or whether it was gonna be like what we did last year. It was Allison telling me, me with me, uh, and Chris going to tell us what funds the town had. She didn't even know, she hadn't even started what those are. Right now, she is both the town administrator and the finance director. So I do think we push for the, the meeting with the powers that lead, and the finance committee and the selectmen, because we need. Because we need to see a reaction to the word override.
I think we'll get the support of the finance committee. I, I really don't know if we're selecting well enough. If they would. I can speak for one. But here, here's what she wrote. She basically asked, uh, can we plan to meet early December when I have a better picture of everything? Question mark, question mark. So we should respond back to yes.
I mean, I see Steve, but I said, yes, for the town meeting, we have them down Monday. Yes, we want to do that. But didn't extend it out to a selectman and a finance committee. And that's not saying she wouldn't do that. I think that's really important to do that because otherwise you can't get a, a read on the blood pressure of, uh. Two very important boards.
But what we can only have is discussion of there might have to be an override has to begin and.
There are other departments in the town that will be presenting her with burdens. And as she said, I haven't even had time to look at what's available for funding. So that meeting would be a, here's our version six and it includes X, Y, and Z and it's a. Five hundred thousand dollar, ten percent increase and that's what we need for a good school system.
So I think in all fairness, because I hate blindsiding everybody, is that the initial meeting to be with Allison, with only Allison. So that she could understand the lay of the land in terms of what I'm here, but we should already have. She should know that we've scheduled a meeting with someone from the board of selectmen. Someone from the finance committee and herself.
That who scheduled that?
Talk to her first, give her the heads up and then we should schedule with her okay. That we also wanna be meeting number two after we meet with Allison, meeting with all the partners.
That's a good discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I don't wanna blindside anybody, that's not, and she's branded, so I'll never do that.
I mean, do you think any of this is a secret to anybody?
I don't, so the finance committee know because we made it very apparent, but I don't know about the board of selectmen. Because we didn't have any. So I don't know. I don't know how word travels. I know this is a tiny. I think we. And I, the feedback that I have received regarding past overrides have been. That the funds were never used. I don't know if there's any truth to that.
I was told by someone that whenever the school committee is asked for funds for the school, they've never been rejected.
Exactly.
That is what I've been told in this town. I don't know about other departments, but I've heard whenever the school committee says, we need money and this is why we need it for the school, that they get it.
And we, and we, and we. It's been, and I can hear forever and I'm ancient and.
You're not.
No, but I, I've watched enough of this to see that they support the school.
And these are people who haven't had kids in this school for a long time that I was talking to.
Exactly, exactly.
So I feel comfortable. We got what we need. We're close to it.
Great.
We just need to push.
I want your kids to have what my son had, a really great education. And I did too. It's been way, way back when. And there were three schools operating at that point, plus a junior high. Yeah. So, um, that's what we want.
I think it's something that needs to be successful. Well, thank you. I know there's a lot of work that went behind version five and we're asking you to go back to the table.
Well, I never thought version four or five.
She has a hill.
Anymore than, if you paid nothing, it would be six point four percent and would be whatever. Did nothing.
But, but that. That in of itself.
Yeah, I think that's helpful to know.
That we do nothing, it's six point four percent increase.
So we're only looking for another three and a half percent.
It basically says that it's not sustainable at two and a half percent increase to run the school.
I mean, Patty, inflation's been seven percent for the past three years. You can't do a two and a half percent increase to match seven percent. That doesn't work. The math is not that thing.
Version four, nothing new.
Right?
Six point, six and a half percent, three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's nothing new. Does not include, does not include.
Yeah.
And it just has the, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you have no choice on this and. That's the amount. I mean, that's why version four was there. That version five is a, a more of, or maybe a part-time literacy coach and whatever.
Fancy people, so can.
I, can I?
We have no future agenda item and I don't believe we do, but I have motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, speaking at eight fifty-four.
On favor.
Hi.
Thank you, Marianne. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.